All right, we're gonna go ahead and get this workshop going. We're running a few minutes behind. I know Aaron is on his way up to the computers for presenting. It's the compensation study review. We don't really have an audience for it this evening. Do we have a Zoom audience?
Not yet. We have Councilmember Neil's on Zoom.
Well, not to discount him. And Rusty, if you can hear me, if you need to say something, just speak up because I don't see you on the screen unless you're talking. So.
Okay, I will. This is a test. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfect.
Okay.
And I don't have my computer on for Zoom.
I'm watching, Mayor.
Okay.
I have no idea. I don't need to know.
Thank you. There we go. Okay.
Mary LaBarre in council, thank you so much for allowing us to present our compensation survey results to you tonight. I am going to start with the methodology that we use for this compensation study. And then Aaron will go over all the numbers because you certainly don't want me doing that. You would like Aaron doing that.
Who are you?
Oh, I forgot. I am Amy. I forgot who I am. I'm Amy Jacob, HR Generalist for the city. And so Aaron and I worked on this together in conjunction with Employers Council is who we contracted with. And our consultant was Cindy Myers. My Meisner, sorry, I pronounced her name wrong. So I'm gonna start with, you know, what was the methodology? So part of this is part of our overall compensation plan. And in order to have a solid compensation structure and strategy, you need to start with a compensation survey to figure out where you are paying your employees compared to other employers. This should really be done about every two or three years, the comp study should, to make sure that we are staying competitive within the job market and we're paying our employees fairly for the jobs that they are doing. So like I said, this gives us now with this compensation study, a solid foundation to build our overall compensation structure. How did the study? How was the study conducted? We started by reviewing every single one of our job descriptions. So we looked at these, we made sure that the descriptions were correct, the requirements were correct, which would be experience, education, tasks that they perform. So we went through all of that. After that, we sent those to Cindy at Employers Council. And she matched our jobs with job descriptions from well-established salary surveys. And up here, we now have all of those surveys that she used. We chose to look at Southern Colorado and Colorado Springs for our data because those are really our competitors. That's who we are all in the same job market for employees. So we looked at those and there are several studies. These studies are used across the nation actually, so they're very well established. Then for positions, I skipped too far, sorry. For positions that were already job matched in our last compensation survey, we just updated that data. So what were those new salaries? Other positions, we created new positions, some job descriptions, added duties. We looked and had to try and find job matches. So what Cindy did was she likes about a 70 to 80% match on a job description with this salary surveys that are up on the screen right now. Then we look at and wait, what percentage is that task of a person's job? So we're really breaking it down to see where that job should be in our salary structure.
Which slide are you on now?
I am. I'm still on the second slide for me. Yeah, I don't have very many slides, Robert. Um, then after matching the jobs, we updated a few of the positions to different grades. Why did we do this? We looked at the following factors to decide that they should be moved up a grade, all of these positions were. We looked at the degree of knowledge and skills. We looked at the span of control of the position. We looked at reporting relationships, scope of decision-making authority, types of decisions made and the impacts those decisions have on the city. And then the autonomy of the position. So we have four positions that we moved up in our grade system. After doing that, we actually look at our salary ranges. And we are proposing a change in our salary ranges, which is my next slide. Two slides, sorry. We suggest a change in our salary ranges and this was done by Cindy from Employers Council. And we are suggesting that our new midpoint of these ranges is actually the 50th percentile of the data that Cindy from Employers Council found. So she did an aggregate of all the jobs. And at that 50th percentile is really where our midpoint is. That's our new structure.
And Amy, how does that vary from what we did before in terms of midpoint?
You bet. So our midpoint before, which was done in 2018, 2019, had a range for the midpoint, which we wanted to get away from. The midpoint really should be the 50th percentile of pay. So we did get rid of our midpoint range and now it's just one number. So we have min, mid, and max. Currently, most of our employees are closer to the minimum range. So our goal would be to get our employees to that midpoint. That really is our overall goal because that's paying them in the 50th percentile for their position. We also had 10 employees with these new ranges that would have been below the minimum of that new range. So we would want to bring those employees up to the minimum. And that would be a total cost of $22,000 would be for those positions to move up to the min. Cindy from Employers Council also aged the data to July 1st of 2022. So we're not falling behind already because we've been working on this since the beginning of the year. So she aged it 3% to July 1st of 2022. So we're not starting off behind already. Um, I think that's kind of the summary of how this was conducted. Do you have any questions on the philosophy, the methodology, anything of that sort?
No, I'm just curious on the four jobs that you wanted to move up. What are they? Can we know that?
You bet.
I mean, it wouldn't make any difference to me because I'd like them all to be paid halfway decent, but.
Yes, so we have one of our administrative assistant positions moved from a grade five to a grade six. Our aquatics manager would move from a grade nine to a grade 12. When that position was first started, their scope of work was much smaller. The accounting manager would move from a grade 10 to a grade 12. And our senior planner would move from a grade 11 to a grade 12. So those are the four positions. Oh, thank you. So we have three grade 19 is where we are.
And the city manager is still not surveyed, right? Is he in this structure?
We did not include him in our data, but yes, we did include him as part of the study.
As part of the survey, but he's not in this. Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
All right, so when they, so when they move from a 10 to a 12, their current pay structure, I can't see your top of your columns, but they, you said most of them were on the minimum, right? So for example, who are, who's the person or what's the position that's moving from a 10 to a 12?
So that would be the accounting manager.
Accounting manager. So they're currently at 57, 370. And this proposes that it would move to 68, 150.
Correct.
Now, is this with the graph that looks at over four, four, six-month periods? Or is that jumping to that immediately?
So that would be jumping to it immediately. And then the raises proposed increases that Aaron will go over.
And those four positions total 22 something, is that what you said?
So it's actually, those are just four that we moved. That does not include the 10 that we would move up to the minimum. So they would stay in the same grade. Those 10, however, with the new ranges, they would not be at the minimum of that grade. So they'd still be in the same grade, just with those new minimums, they're still under what that minimum is.
Under what the low is.
Yes. Yes, because they're at the minimum of that grade now. And so when we move that up, it would be 22,000 for those 10 employees.
And then for the four, what's the aggregate of that?
I don't have those numbers, but I could find out for you.
Okay.
So those four, their current salaries are less than the minimum of the new range.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron.
And sorry, just one, one final question on that. So if that's a low point, so taking that one from the 10 to 12, it's going from 57, 370 to 68, 150. And then the goal over the four six-month periods is to move that to 85, 190. Is that correct?
Correct. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron now to do all the fun numbers.
All right. So now that Amy's gone over kind of the how and why of the comp study itself, now we're gonna dive into the numbers and have a little bit of fun here. And I apologize in advance, some of these slides have a lot of data on them. I did my best to make them as readable as possible, but there is a lot, so. Well, I'll try to explain them as we go.
Well, and your slide numbers correlate with our packet slide pages, so.
I hope so.
They do. So far, they do.
All right, so this first one, if we look at the purple bars, this is our current average salary in each grade as of today. And our light, our light green line is what the new grade midpoint would be for each grade. So you can see consistently for each grade, we're well below with a pretty big gap all the way across the board from where we currently are in each grade to where the midpoint is.
So that provokes a question. If that's an app, that current average salary would be the average of all of those folks that are classified as a grade one.
Correct.
Okay. Why do they, why do we compare them to the midpoint when their tenure may not justify the midpoint? You follow what I'm saying? There may be some that have tenure long enough that they've progressed to towards the midpoint of their current grade. But maybe we have some in that class or that classification that may not have approached the midpoint yet. So do you understand my concern with that comparison?
I do understand your question. So when we were looking at this, I don't have an exact answer.
Well, and it doesn't really come, it doesn't really charge you with an answer. It's just something that I see that could skew the implementation of the plan to be higher than maybe it necessarily is. Do you agree with that?
I understand what you're saying. So when we're, our proposal, which I'll get to in a couple of slides.
I'm probably premature.
Yeah, it moves everybody where they currently are up evenly. So every person, no matter where they are, so if we have a more tenured person, they probably are higher in the grade currently.
So their range penetration will match.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, so some of them may be above the midpoint and some of them may still end up a little bit below the midpoint, but they'll all move up evenly.
That answers my question. Thank you.
And just to note, when we hire on employees, it would be towards that minimum so that we still have our long-term employees higher in the grade.
That, that was my question. It's like, how does this structure reflect those who have tenure, those who've been here a long time and somebody entry into that same category? So you start them at the minimum and your goal is to go by performance or to go by years in the seat in terms of pay scale?
So currently, it would be COLA increases. And tell me if I'm speaking out of turn, it'd be COLA increases, so it'd be across the board. Then as we have this, now this strong foundation for our compensation structure, then we can start building those career paths.
Pay for performance.
Certifications, but we have to start at this level before we can really build that vertical career pathing. All kinds of different names for it.
On those varying range penetrations are what you're talking about, Robert. They've, they've, their tenure has taken them to a certain point in the range. And you can calculate what that percentage is and then place them in their new grade at that same penetration level. So it, it's equitable. The move is equitable.
And in 2018, we didn't have this metric in place. Is that what you're saying?
We did.
We did. It was just structured a little differently. So it had the grades still, but it had a min range, so starting point, had two midpoints and then a max, which for us, now that we're looking at that, does not make sense. The midpoint should just be the 50th percentile. So we're taking out that mid-range.
To moves.
Yes.
All right.
This resembles more what we, what is typical and what we've been used to for many, many years, those that have been around, is this structure. So I'm, thank you. I'm glad to see it.
So Amy, you said that you were looking at, when you hire in, you're gonna hire in at the minimum? Is this just strictly based on tenure or do we not take into account experience if you hire someone into a position?
So experience will have an impact. However, we like to keep internal equity. So before an offer goes out, if someone has 15 years of water experience, they'd be brought in someone above the min, definitely. But we have employees in our water department who have been there for years. And so we look at that internal equity also. Does that answer it?
It does, but my concern is that if you want to get qualified people that are gonna stick around, you know, if you're looking for the best qualified people, they may not want to come in at the minimum salary. Even if you, and I understand equity, trust me, I deal with that in my own job, so. But we also have to balance, you know, requirements of the job, experience with, you know, whatever the salary is. So I don't know, just when I heard you say, we want to bring everybody into the mid or at the, you know, kind of entry level salary there, I was concerned. You know, because we want to go after people too that are qualified, experienced and want to stay.
Yes. And you know, the, as a manager, this is kind of a tool that you use to see what, what you're, what your parameters are when you're hiring.
Oh, trust me, I know.
So that, they use that this way here as David.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so as we move to the next slide, the wrong one. Okay, as we move to the next slide, this is the same information we just presented, except for it shows the percentage that we currently are at as a gap to the midpoint. So if we look at this top line, we have 18% for the first one, 23% for the second one, 15% for the third one, and so on. You can see that this is how much of a gap we have in percentage-wise from our average current salary in each grade to the midpoint. And if you look at citywide, we're at a little bit over 16% of a gap when you look at all the positions. And so this is what we've used as a basis to come up with how far we are and how much we need to come up in order to get, on average, the average position up to the midpoint.
And summer is diversion is 23%?
Yes, that is correct. And so you can see that there's a wide gap on, on most of the grades. Any questions on this one? Okay, so now that we've looked at, at kind of our basis for the comp study and how much we're off on each grade, we want to look at the compensation plan that we're proposing to bring everyone up to the midpoint on average. So our compensation is a four-point plan. It is a 5% COLA in July of 2022, and that would be at that point in time, not retroactive. A 4% COLA in January of 2023. Another point in time COLA in July of 2023 of 4%. And a final COLA of 4% in January of 2024. And this is a cumulative COLA of 17%, which would bring everyone above that 16% mark. Do we have any questions on this one?
So I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna assume that this slide, this is a sliding scale because the salaries are gonna continue to go up, but we're gonna take two years to do this. Is it, are we gonna have the same problem in 2024 where we're not paying our staff well enough?
That was my question to you.
Yes, I think she said earlier though that they're gonna, we should be doing this every, what, two to three years?
Three years.
So we should evaluate every two, three years. So we shouldn't be in that situation. Or if we are, it's gonna be, there'll be another study done. But my concern is, do we have a hard time keeping our senior wage employees? Are we having a harder time keeping our mid and junior wage employees? So when you talk about a increase across the board, well, if somebody's making over $135,000, I'm not gonna leave their job. But it's difficult to keep the, the jobs that are more junior pay. So though I understand and across the board, you know, I also understand that there's probably some targeted increases that should happen, which may not make some of the senior people happy that have been here for a while. But if you want to make it to where you're retaining employees, targeted raises instead of just across the board 17% is probably a better way to go.
There are four that you're targeting plus 10 more, correct? So there's 14 positions you're currently targeting for an increase right away. Correct.
So when Cindy did the comp study, she did look at where each position is in comparison to the market. And when we looked at that data, it was across the board from the top to the bottom. And we did feel that the best way to bring everybody up evenly would be to do with the COLA approach as opposed to the targeted. But I definitely see your point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I deal with this with employees. We don't have a problem with our senior leadership leaving. I'm not gonna leave my job. But I have junior employees that we've done salary studies on that are looking, constantly looking for a better job to make more money because we're trying to keep the average salary. So what I mean by targeted raises in particular is those employees that typically don't make a lot of money, but you know, might stay longer, might give you some more tenure in those positions if you, if their, their increases were a little bit more. You know, so maybe you are paying more than half or more than midpoint for some of the junior salaries. Those salaries also are less expensive to the city than, than somebody who makes over $135,000 a year. You know, when I was looking at your last slide, so percentage-wise, right? So why wouldn't you target those employees and give them a bigger bump on that side rather than just a single increase for everyone? So that you're better utilizing your money and you're distributing it to the right areas to retain.
So I would, I'll argue that with you. And I'm just gonna give you another point of view. I would, I would venture to say that our senior employees probably have fallen behind as well. And I think the investment in those experienced leaders in our, in our business is very important as well as containing that turnover in the junior and mid, mid-level employees. So I would say that that we need to focus on that retention as well because these numbers tell me we've fallen significantly far behind over these last four years. Hillary and I were on the council when we went through this before and the police department was practically vacant. And we bit the bullet and in 12 months, we implemented the study in order to close that gap for all employees that had fallen significantly far behind. The investment we've made in our senior staff, they can go work somewhere in the private sector. And if they go to the private sector, trust me, they could make a significant amount of money more than they make here. So, and, and they can go to other organizations, Fountain, for instance, for utilities and different places like that. And so it's, it's important for us to focus on retaining the investment that we have in our senior staff just as much as it is in not having a revolving door in the junior and mid-level areas. Because the market just is going to tell us what that looks like.
I think the market is telling us right now that we're not keeping junior employees and that's where our investment should be.
I mean, just, I just wanted to add, if you look at our senior, our directors, Kip, Cindy and I are the only three that have been here. Every, all the other directors are new. So I would have to say respectfully disagree.
And what was the tenure on the previous employees, like Sally?
35 years.
35 years.
We have our finance directors. It's been a revolving door with our finance directors.
There is another part of this.
We just, yeah, I don't know if council knows that yet.
That wasn't due to salary reasons, though, I don't believe.
I, I just disagree. I've, I've worked with these studies for many, many, many years and.
Well, it's not an argument, Kelly. It's, it's trying to figure out the best way to spend the money. I'm not saying you're right or wrong, or I'm right or wrong. I'm just bringing the point up so that we can, we can discuss it. So, you know, that's all.
Okay.
I'm not trying to, you know, fire rounds at people.
Not at all.
Like, let's look at this realistically and try to best utilize our money to retain those positions because, you know, Kip's a senior, a senior guy. But would Kip rather make more money or would rather Kip rather not have to go out and plow at four o'clock in the morning because we have retained some junior employees? That's all I'm saying. So I'm trying to look at that.
Well, sure.
It's a balance, David.
Yeah, I get it. I think he does like to drop a plow.
So there, there's another part of this that I, that I like to introduce. You know, I come out of the private sector. That's all fine to have salary, competitive salaries, et cetera, but I'm not saying we don't have great employees. But when you have employee who occupies the space and he's just comfortable, she's comfortable, just, oh yeah, I just can just sit here and occupy the space. I want to see what the incentive part of this is. Sometimes, you know, I'll just simplify to say, a McDonald's worker or an Arby's worker doesn't get paid great. But that's by design. It's because they're motivated to keep moving forward. So in this structure, if they're gonna be guaranteed price escalators at every step and not have any metrics on their performance, I think that's a missing piece of what I've seen so far. So can you address that? Have you, have you looked at that? Is there, is that part of your model or are you just accepting that everybody's gonna get paid just because it's, it's 50% top?
Well, and I'll address that. So at the request of previous other council members of the past, we, we've been focusing our limited HR resources on coming up with this. As, as Amy mentioned, the foundational piece for our compensation has to be just treading water, which we're not doing very well right now. And bringing people up to a wage that they can get by on in an era of 9% inflation, this is the first step. So having this in place, we. So having this in place, we believe the next logical step would be to look again at merit, some kind of merit-based compensation. I respectfully would take great exception with the assertion that any of our employees are just sitting on their butts doing nothing. Our employees work very, very hard, top to bottom. And we, we are developing culture here, and I've seen it personally, where the people who don't pull their weight generally self-eject. Because they are held to a high standard, um, particularly on a Kip side. But, uh, we, something I've I've asked Amy and Rob and and Aaron to look at in the future is. What is, what is a merit process look like, um, especially in this day and age? And and we have some initial thoughts on that. Um, Aaron, Aaron has some neat ideas. I don't want to get into it too much right now because we are in limited time, that's kind of a bunny trail. The other thing I would say to Councilmember Ot's point is, I asked Aaron to go back to this slide. And you look at grades four through ten. Um, and that's where you're going to find a lot of our field folks. I believe that's where you're going to find our police officer ones. Um, and you do see kind of a dip in that line. So we, we actually have focused what limited resources we have for bringing people up in the grade. On those kind of lower third level positions. Um, and so we've, we, we absolutely have heard you on that, and we have had a lot of turnover with, uh, with our field folks in particular. And that's stabilizing to some extent. We're almost fully staffed, um, public works and utilities, sorry if I'm still near Thunderkit. But you'll, just the data, I think bears out a little bit that we're working on that very thing, and you know, we hear you. Because that's, those are the folks who like, they're, a lot of times they're living paycheck to paycheck. And it's not, it's not just icing on the cake when you get more money, which you do after a certain salary level, as we all know. So we, we hear you, absolutely.
Yeah, and I bring this up, Michael, because in talking with Kip in the past, I think that some of the frustration is you get someone in, you train them. And then they go to Colorado Springs Utilities, you know, and that's what what I would like to see stop. And that's why I was looking at those targeted type raises. That's kind of where I was, that's really the caveat that I was bringing that up under, is that that type of situation.
So, uh, Councilmember Ot, the reason we looked in our last study, we looked at certain municipalities. They weren't our competition. And so that's why the scope of this survey went to Southern Colorado and Colorado Springs. Because those really are our competitors, and so how do we stay competitive with those markets?
Can I jump in? I was jumping, all, all great points, um, across the board. Um, I'll reiterate kind of what Aaron was saying at the get-go is, it's that delta that we're low across the board now. I would love to throw money at our staff, or I'll say our, like, like Michael said, four through, gr- grade four through grade ten to keep them here. They are performing certain functions, though, and and to keep them here, if they wanted to go to another municipality for the same function, they, they might be able to do that. Right? The, the challenge that we have is even. If we don't have any room within the ranges, if, if, let's say you have a, a tenured staff at five years. Because that's, that'd be a long time for us right now, right? And they're, they're not even to the midpoint, right? And then you have someone who applies for that same job with that same experience, and there's no room to bring them in at the same. You have to bring them in below because that person's been here and they know our system. So there's no, there's no bandwidth in there to do anything, so we need to have that flexibility. And that's been the champ, most challenging thing, so it's like, I'll just use a, a, a water operator. So let's say you have a guy that's been here ten years, and you have an opening and a guy who applies with ten years, right? And the guy that's been here ten years is just off the bottom or off the minimum. Like, you need to bring this new guy in, you need to bring him above where your employee is now, and so now it's like. Yeah, we give them all raises because we can't get anybody here. That's been the challenge. Now, at the same time, we typically bring people in and train them and they leave, right? So that, that happens. It's unfortunate, but it does, and that's how we roll. We're never going to be Colorado Springs Utilities. We're never going to be there, so we have to keep that in mind, too. So, I mean, just to kind of reiterate what everybody's saying, it's.
Yeah, it looks like the range is not very, uh, these bands are not very large either. So if your mid, if your starting wage is thirteen, your mid-grade is fifteen on a one there, you got like really not much to play with. So I, so I understand what you're saying, um, you know, and looking at that, and I looked at this before I even came here, and I thought, wow, these. These pay bands are pretty small. Is that, uh, is that pretty standard? I mean, I don't know in the, in the, in the public sector here, is that pretty standard for, uh, for the, for the wage, uh, bands there?
Grades one, three and four are all part-time positions. So those are, or I'm sorry, grades one, two and three are part-time, and those are half years. So the thirteen is really twenty-six, the fifteen is really thirty. I should have mentioned that.
That makes a huge difference.
In your budget, there's the, the pay, pay rates.
Yeah.
That will help.
Right, right.
Can you speak into your mic?
I say what this does do, though, is gives a benefit of having more money to negotiate for better employees. You don't have to pay him that full price the first day.
So, Kip, back to your example, does this new structure make it such? That the person who's has tenure, tenure, the ten years experience you said, so going to move them up to the mid-range? And then your entry guy is going to start, so there's going to be a measurable difference, difference between their.
Ideally, yes, every position's different, uh, for every grade, uh, but ideally, yes, if, and I'm not, not one to give. People raises just for tenure. Correct. It's, and, you know, we, we still want to have, like Michael's saying, that culture, like you work hard, you're compensated for it. So regardless of how long they've been here, I think their pay should reflect the work they do. But we've just fallen behind in trying to get those new people in and so on and so forth. Then, in, sorry, Michael, um, and over the years, I mean, council knows it's usually, it's just a, it's a cola. It's very rarely are we given the opportunity now to do merit, because we're just trying to keep people at the minimum with the cola. And we, if we made more monies available for merit, it might help.
Right, and I, I, and Amy, please correct me if I'm mistaken, but I, I don't think we have any automatic steps for positions in the city.
We do not.
Okay.
And and the, the other part of your measurement, you know, when you showed the different organizations that you were looking at to base your study on. How much of that is the private sector and how much same staffing challenges is the private sector having at this time? And is that a part of your, your, your measurements here?
So, um, Employers Council focused on local government was their focus. When you do look, I just know in my, um, HR meetings. Private sector is absolutely having the same issues. They are able to pay higher than what local government, um, does, and they're still having issues. So all of us have started to get together and brainstorm, what else can we offer? Because everyone's having this issue, the great resignation.
So I know Rusty wants to speak, so we're going to let him speak, and then we're going to let you guys carry on with the presentation. Because we just got to page ten finally, so, um, so Rusty, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Hillary. Let me put my hand down first, so I don't forget. Okay, um, I, I guess the first thing I want to do is start off with a comment. You know, I've been in both the, uh, commercial sector and the government's sector. And the one thing I've learned from both sectors is salary is not everything for keeping employees. Uh, they've done all kinds of studies that there are other factors that cause employees to leave. And salary is actually fairly low on, on the list. But it's not at the bottom, but it, it's not way up at the top that you would expect. That's the first comment. The second thing is, we're, we're trying to solve a problem, but there's a glaringly missing piece of data for me. What's the churn rate we have by grade right now? I mean, everybody's saying we're losing people, every business I've ever been in, whether it's the military or commercial, many commercial companies. The first thing we look at is what is our churn rate? What, what is the rate that we are losing people by grade? And and you haven't presented that piece of data, so that is a request for more information. And then the second concern I have is, while I, I, I would love to just hand out money to everybody. I, I'm in the business of managing shortages. Because we've got debt, which means we have a shortage of money to pay off our debt. We've got a lot of roads that need to be repaired. We've got a lot of, uh, things we would like to do. So my question is, what is the source for the funds that this? Proposal or this request is coming from? Are, are you going to talk to us about where the source is for the funds?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, so let's, let's go ahead and let them try to get through their presentation so that they can get, I think it'll preempt most questions, so. And then we can come back around. So let's try to let these guys finish first, and then, so make a note of your questions, and then we'll come back around.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to, I mean, you did call me out. Um, I did want to ask, you know, what the churn rate is. Because are you going to talk to, i- is that in the presentation?
That, I don't believe that's in the presentation. We do have the, um, overall turnover rate for all last year, right? And what is that?
Forty-two percent.
Forty-two percent.
It's huge.
Yeah, but you gotta do it by grade.
I can get close by grade, but like, for grade six, that's most of our employees. For grade fifteen, there might be one, so in grade fifteen, if you lost that one person, hundred percent turnover, it doesn't, can't compare apples to apples that way.
Agree, but, but I would like to see a breakdown by grade before we start making across-the-board sweeping adjustments. You know, where do we have the problems? So that, that's a request, and, and I've, I've laid my concerns on the table. Let's go ahead and move forward with the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, this next slide shows where we anticipate being in January two thousand twenty-four if we implement this plan. By grade, so you can see that dark purple line is still the current average salary, and the light blue line is now the projected salary in two thousand twenty-four. You can see that essentially every position after this would be at or above the midpoint if we implement this.
Implementation is a light blue?
Uh, implementation is the lighter blue, and the green line across the top is the midpoint.
Look at your packets.
Of the purple line.
I apologize, that light blue line is a little hard to see.
Where the little green circles are, on the green line.
Sorry, and, and. I'll hold my questions, but I have a question on this slide is why we've exceeded the mid-line on various numbers of these.
The main rea-, the main reason would be, I'm sorry, somebody.
Yeah, I was just saying that it exceeds it because it's the current average. Or are you talking about the light blue line and like wage grade seventeen?
Yeah, the main reason would be that the people in the current positions may be more experienced, they may have more years of service. So it's reflected in here that some of those positions are still going to move up that seventeen percent. They may have been here ten, fifteen years, so now they're going to be higher in the grade. It, it speaks a lot to what your questions have been throughout the presentation is, are those people who've been here for a while going to be rewarded? Yes, that they're going to be above the midpoint. That would be the reason.
So it's more of an average?
It's, it's, it is the average, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and so I wanted to go into one example. We picked the position that has the most FTE counts right now, and that is a police officer one. So this is what the plan would look like for them. Uh, currently, the average salary of police officer one is fifty-two, five oh four, and the midpoint in the market is fifty-eight thousand. So we've, we've got a pretty good gap there. So July, the five percent raise would bring them to fifty-five, January twenty-four, they'd be at fifty-seven, three thirty-four. July of twenty-three, they'd be at fifty-nine, six twenty-seven, which is actually above the midpoint. Um, and then January of twenty-four, they'd be at sixty-two thousand, and this is an average, it's not going to be every employee, but every police officer, but this is the average. And the midpoint would be fifty-eight. So this is a good illustration of this would be a great retention and recruiting tool if we could be at this, the salary point. Okay, so now we've looked at what we're proposing, now let's look at what it would cost. So the, this is the incremental cost at a point in time, what it would cost at each phase of this project citywide on this slide. So it's a hundred and fifty-four thousand in July of twenty-two, it's two hundred and fifty-nine thousand in January of twenty-three. It's a hundred and thirty-four thousand in July of twenty-three, and two hundred and eighty thousand in January of two thousand twenty-four. And this is the incremental, minimal cost, this is not cumulative, this is, this is what it would cost at each point for the increase. Questions?
Something I just would like to point out is, keep in mind that the majority of the employees are in the general fund. But the rest and the majority of the other employees are in the water and wastewater funds. And those are the only funds, other than there may be a, some funding from grant funds. But the, the positions, the employees lie in the general fund, water and wastewater funds.
Correct, and in this next slide, I break it down by fund here. So you can see the, the light green line is general funded, makes up the majority, and then our dark, uh, green line. That's water and wastewater. So those two make up the, the vast majority of the, the cost.
Sorry, Cindy, I forgot, you got branched out on your own.
All right, and then this is the cumulative cost for the general fund that the plan will cost. So in two thousand twenty-two, the increase from right now would be a hundred and fifteen thousand five eighty. At the end of January twenty, I mean, at the end of December two thousand twenty-three, the, the cumulative cost would be five twenty-six. And then the ongoing cost of the plan at the end of two thousand twenty-four, it's eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So that's the total cost of implementing this for the general fund. And we put this slide in here, if you guys had any questions about why, why we decided to do the incremental plan. Um, it is a lot less costly than if we just gave everybody the, the increase at this point in time. You can see in this year, it would be about two hundred and eighty thousand more. And in two thousand twenty-three, it would be about two hundred and fifty thousand, and then once we get to the end of two thousand twenty-four, it would, it would even out.
Can you say that again, please? Because I'm looking at these numbers and I'm trying to see where you're reading those numbers from. Can you say that again, please?
Sure, so in, in two thousand, this is a comparison between the plan that we're proposing versus if you guys were just like, we, we want to do. The whole raise right now, the whole seventeen percent. So in two thousand twenty-two, the annual cost right now would be a hundred and fifteen thousand five eighty. If you did the whole thing, it would be three hundred and ninety-two, two seventy-three. And in two thousand twenty-three, it would be five twenty-six, three oh eight versus seven eighty-four, five forty-six. And two thousand twenty-four would be eight thirty-seven, um, against seven eighty-four, five forty-six. And the reason that number is a little bit more is because when you do it in, in stages, it's compounding as opposed to just the one time.
So these are, this is, let, let's just use a mark on the wall, the incremental plan, one point four seven nine K. Oh, no, mil, one point four seven nine mil. This is the total compensation, or is this the compensation addition?
This is the addition.
So, Aaron, on the slide before. This was a cumulative cost.
For general fund, yeah.
Right, so. You're adding those together, so you're, this number is way inflated. The total is eight thirty-seven, three oh one, oh two. Why are you adding those three together when they are cumulative already?
This is, this is the three-year cost.
But that's what this is.
This is.
It's the same.
It's.
But why did you add them together? Because it's cumulative.
So this, this eight thirty-seven number, I, I know this, so this eight thirty-seven number is what it act, our salaries will actually be increased. From today all the way to the end of two thousand twenty-four.
Right, so why are you adding them together to come with one point?
Because this, this is. The eight thirty-seven, for, for two thousand twenty-four, that's how much more it would be than two thousand twenty-two. It's not.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
You don't add them all up.
But you don't add them all up because. But you don't add them all up because it's already cumulative. It's already cumulative.
But you would.
So.
See if you're trying to get the.
If you, if you look at.
Kelly, you would add them all together if you're looking for the three-year cumulative.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm, we're looking at the three-year cumulative on this one, not the one-year cost.
Correct, correct.
I get it.
That's not, it's not rolling up from what you've presented us already.
Aaron, if I understand it, it's going to cause, if we approve this, it's going to cost an additional hundred and fifteen thousand, five eighty this year.
Correct.
Next year, it's going to cost us an additional five twenty-six, three oh eight.
From today, not yet.
Right.
Right.
And then over three years, it'll.
And over three years, it's eight thirty-seven, not one point four seven nine million.
You know, no. The eight thirty-seven number though does roll, so like two thousand and twenty-five, it would be eight thirty-seven again, two thousand and twenty-six, it would be.
Right.
Correct, correct.
What is the?
What's the one four seven?
That's it, that's the three-year cost.
That's the three.
No, it's not. Eight thirty-seven is the three-year cost.
Yeah.
No, in two thousand and twenty-four, it's going to cost us eight thirty-seven additional, just for two thousand and twenty-four.
Relative to today, if we were looking at today versus January or December thirty-first to twenty-four, it's eight thirty-seven. More years it would roll, just like it does on the July seventeen, where it drops twenty-three, twenty-four, it stays the same. Your, your three, your three-year total damage relative to today is.
That doesn't add up either.
Nine.
That doesn't add up either.
Well, I'm interested in knowing where this is coming from in the general fund. And I thought I saw a slide when I was reviewing this that it looks like it's going to cost us more than we receive revenues. And that's the slide I'd like to talk about. Why would we be proposing something that's costing us more than we're able to afford with revenues?
That's misleading.
That's why we're having this, to get this out, so that we can figure out that problem next.
Right, well, it's here somewhere.
I know we're, we're starting to run short on time. I do have some market slides right here. I'm just going to go through them really quickly. Year over year, the Denver CPIU, it's nine point one percent up this March versus last March. Social Security is already planning that they're probably going to have a nine percent COLA because of the inflation rate for this next year. And last year, we had a five point nine percent increase. So COLA, so I'm sorry, inflation has been approximately sixteen percent for the last two years when you add them together. So this is the first step when we're looking at obviously compensation, inflation, they usually try to go somewhat together. And this just shows that there, there's a big gap there. Market indicators for twenty-three and twenty-four, it's not all bad news. The federal, the Federal Reserve is expected to do several more interest rate increases to try to curb inflation. And the Federal Reserve is projecting that growth and inflation are going to be significantly curbed going forward for twenty-three and twenty-four. We had ten percent in two thousand and twenty-one for our growth. We had five and a half percent for, I'm sorry, for twenty and for twenty-one, we had five and a half percent. So this is a huge decrease in the, in the growth projections. And then inflation projections compared to the nine point one percent, two point six and two point three for twenty-three and twenty-four, much more in line. So when we're doing our projections for the twenty-three and twenty-four, to do the cost calculations for this, print projections, we're using a two point two percent in twenty-three and a two percent in twenty-four to project our revenue increases. And we're using two point six percent and two point three inflation to increase our expenditure projections. Questions on that? All right, so how are we going to pay for the plan? Obviously, we're, we're going to use the revenue growth. We have ARP funds available and we have fund balance.
Well, I always feel a caution when you try to use one-time dollars to fund something which is recurring cost. So how are you justifying that as?
These are, these are the ideas that we have at this time. These are not set in stone. It just buys us.
Please say that again. Please say that into the mic louder.
These are not set in stone. These are just options we have available. Any other? So this, based on those, these are the projections that we have for our revenue increases in twenty-three. So four hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven revenue increase projected. Our expenditure increase in twenty-three would be five fifty-two. This is the two point six percent inflation plus all the salary increase. And that would leave us, currently in twenty-two, we have a lot more revenue than we do expenditure. But this would reduce it by a little bit, making it two hundred and fifty-four thousand in twenty-three, how much revenue we have more than expenditure that current year.
Okay, but a question. So that is just our staff expenditure increase that we are taking our revenue increase from. Correct?
We're taking, yeah.
So, so this includes the two point six percent inflation across all of our expenditures. Plus, it includes.
A hundred and fifteen thousand.
Plus it. So this is not just staff. This is not just staff. This is every, okay, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
This is a full projection for what two thousand and twenty-three would look like at the end of the year for the fund. And it is a projection and to, I mean, our, our revenue increases have been much higher than what we're projecting here. But if that's, we're using what the Federal Reserve has because we're not fortune tellers, you know, we have to, we have to use.
I would do a friendly bet on that one, that it's only going to be two point two.
Next year, yes. And then in two thousand and twenty-four, though, we can see revenues will, are projected increase three hundred and eight thousand, but expenditures wouldn't increase by six hundred and fifty thousand. And that would be the first year that we would see our expenditures increase by more than our revenues.
Correct.
So that's.
Does that include capital?
And this.
That includes everything. Based on, based on the twenty-two budget, we didn't take anything out. We just added it all and kept going forward. And I have those slides available if anybody wants to see them, the, the full projection, but.
And Aaron, I'm trying to go by the number I saw on, yeah, it's very hard to tell who's talking over each other. I'll be quiet for just a second. Go ahead, who's trying?
No, go ahead, Rusty, finish your thought.
Okay, thank you. Aaron, so this is two thousand and twenty-three. So for two thousand and twenty-two, if I remember the slide, it was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar for two thousand and twenty-two. It was about a five hundred thousand dollar increase for two thousand and twenty-three and eight hundred-ish for two thousand and twenty-four. Am I remembering those three numbers close?
Correct.
Okay, that's staff, that was purely staff. So since we don't have two thousand and twenty-two up here, we start with two thousand and twenty-three, which is five hundred and something. The expenditure increase for the entire budget is very close. The staff increase for two thousand and twenty-three to the total budget increase of five hundred and fifty-two, zero, seven, six. Is that a correct observation?
Let me see, do we have a minute to just go through?
Well, it's on here.
Yes, five twenty-six, three oh eight.
Okay, so in two thousand and twenty-two.
I mean, you could go back about three slides and you had the, the slide, the three numbers I'm trying to remember.
So in two thousand and twenty-two, our salary and benefits is projected to be five million, four hundred thousand, four hundred and eleven thousand, seven, eleven.
It's line above. So I'm above. Five, six, five.
Yeah. Five, six, six, seven, five, six, six, seven, seven hundred. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, it's projected to be six million, one fifty-six, seven, six.
Yeah, this is fine. Can you go back to the slide that had the incre, we were having the conversation about the incremental increases by year and then the one point four? And I'm using the left-hand side just from memory. Can we go back to that slide?
Yeah.
More, cut one more, I think.
Yeah.
That one right there. Okay, so let's use two thousand and twenty-three because that's where that other number started. You show that the total cost increase, our expenditure increase for two thousand and twenty-three is going to be five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars and change. And this slide is telling me that our staffing increase is going to be five hundred and twenty-six. So we are five hundred and twenty-six five hundred and fifty-fourths of the increase is due to staffing. Is that an observe, a correct observation of those two lines?
This slide is misleading. It's five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars more than today. But when you're doing the, when you're doing it, you have to look at the difference between twenty-three and the end of twenty-two. So it would be the one fifteen minus the five twenty-six to get the salary increase for twenty-three. So it actually more like three hundred. So there's two hundred and some odd thousand dollars of other expenditures, not just salary. I'm sorry.
That, that's fine. Relevant to me for twenty, at the end of twenty-four.
Rusty, can I, can I ask you now about two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes, go ahead, I'll be quiet.
So would you go back to the other slide? With the one with the graphs for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four?
This one?
Keep going. Keep going, keep going. Keep, keep going.
This way?
No, the other way. You go, go forward to page nineteen on my slide deck. There, so how do you propose that this is sustainable? When we have an eight in two thousand and twenty-four, when you reach these proposed targets, that we have an eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollar deficit on the revenues and expenditures? How's, how's that, how's that wash?
I would expect our revenues to increase by more than that amount, but I'm being very conservative in these projections. We increased by the inflation rates.
Well, the reason I say that is because we're going into a period of high uncertainty, changing markets and therefore changing revenues. And what you're proposing is going to be a constant for the city. It will be a constant increase that we have to sustain for the city. So why haven't your numbers reflected so you don't have a negative projection when you get to the point of ready to go? I mean, you're, you're catching up, catching up, catching up, and then you're catching up and exceeding your midline on a number of the different, what do you call them?
Grades.
Grades, thank you. So why don't you adjust it so that we're at least, I mean, it's hard to sell something and you're, you're, you're walking us into debt or in and into an uncertain period. I, I don't understand the logic of that.
Well, and if I could, this is two thousand and twenty-four, it's several years out. We budget one year at a time. Part of the reason we liked this phased approach over years is so that we can have the flexibility to throttle back the increases if necessary. This is what's, this is what's known as a structural rev, revenue issue. This is a classic problem that a lot of cities have. And so Aaron is right, this is a very, very conservative revenue projection. But it, to your point, there, there would have to be, assuming nothing changes and Aaron is the first person in history to hit all of his numbers perfectly, there's going to have to be some managed, active management of the budget to offset that eighty-eight thousand dollars, which is fairly manageable, is eighty-eight thousand dollars on an almost thirty million dollar budget by thirteen something million dollar general fund budget by that point. But there, there, there would need to be some management and there would, you all, you all can't technically decide beyond the end of this year technically anyway, until you do next year's budget. And so this, the plan is going to have to be formally approved by each council for each success, success and succeeding budget. So there's, there's different gates that would have to go through before we, we get to this problem. And so you're not, if you made a decision right now, there's not a darn thing you can do about that twenty-four number. It's going to have to be the council next year and that's September, October time. But that, that's why we like the phased approach is it gives us some flexibility as opposed to front-loading seventeen percent right now. Then it's like that gives you less flexibility.
So that's, Michael, you just described exactly the roles of the council versus staff. The council budgets, budgets and annual appropriation for all the expenses. It's a plan, it's a work plan for the year. It's the best knowledge we have at the time that the budget is prepared and approved. And then the staff goes forward with that plan in that direction that the council's given them. And they do the best they can to implement that plan. And there's changes that occur throughout the year in many different areas and in many different ways. And so that's the staff's job is to manage the budget within the constraints that the city council has placed upon them by appropriating funds. And so that's your job versus our job is to appropriate the funds at the thirty thousand foot level and let the professional staff implement the plan according to the best that they can. And, and that's another beauty, like you described about the annual appropriation, is that we can make adjustments at this time next year. We'll look at this as part of the budget plan and say, what can we afford? What can we do? But, and, and again, I just want to make one more comment. This, where we're at today with this deficit in our pay plan is a result of years, several years of the council not recognizing that we need to pay our employees adequately and provide them with the tools they need to do the job. And so now this council is trying to work through those oversights and those not taking care of business in prior years. So I just have to put that out there because I watched it and here we are.
And if I, I just might editorialize for just one moment more. This is not factual, but I'm, I was actually quite pleased and surprised when Aaron brought forward this plan phased as it is, the very, very conservative, perhaps very, very conservative revenue growth and still had only a small deficit at the end of the plan. You're, you're talking about increasing this, the pay for a hundred and thirty people by seventeen percent over a year and a half. And you're still basically balanced. That's, that's pretty cool. So if, if that, that, that gave me great peace, I was expecting a, a six-figure upside down number, to be quite honest.
Thank you, Aaron. Good job.
Okay, any further questions? Rusty, do you have any further questions? Hearing none.
I'll let him, I'll let him continue on with the presentation.
We're at the end.
That was it.
And I, I want to make one more comment to Hillary, if you don't mind. I made a note. We are not short and unable to meet our debt service payments. We make our annual required debt service payments on time with interest and do that very succinctly and within our budget and have been able to put away quite a bit of money in our fund balance more than I've ever seen cumulative years. I mean, we used to like being over a million, now we're over five in projections for this year. So we are not short, we are making our debt service payments. There is a lofty goal that's been discussed for many years about paying off the debt. I think it's unreasonable. I think paying down the debt as we can is absolutely something we should keep in the forefront. But debt is a good thing and debt has, has uses for those that benefit from the items that they funded going into the future and not paid for by those in the past. So I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you, Hillary.
Okay, anything further, counsel? No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, so. Rusty, did you, are you good?
Well, I, I just listened to what Kelly said and I, I agree on one hand with some of what you said and some previous comments. I just, we're, we're not living with the sins of past councils in, in my mind. And this is my opinion. What we're doing is listening to what the citizens are asking us as their representative on how to prioritize the spending of the money. And I guess what I'm here, I haven't seen this city screaming that the priority is to put the money towards salary adjustments. I, I know without a churn rate. I I know without a churn rate, I I can't say how bad this problem is, other than you're showing me charts that show, oh, we're not hitting, you know, what other people are paying people. But if we're, we're not losing huge numbers of the staff, and that comes from the churn percentages by grade, then I'm not sure the citizens would be happy that, I mean, one of the sources for the money was to take it out of the our reserves, if I remember that slide correctly. We've got to identify where the money's coming from for twenty twenty-two to execute the hundred and fifteen K-ish for this year. And and I'm just trying to balance out, you know, the priorities that the citizens are telling us their priorities are, not what the city staff's priorities are, and I'm, and I'm sorry, Michael, because you do represent the city staff and you do a very good job of it. I know your job is to protect them and keep the city staff functioning properly. It's just, these are some goods, these are numbers that we will feel at some level, and that's why I want to see how big the real problem is by looking at the churn rates. And Hillary, I'll go ahead and be quiet, thank you.
If I, if I may respond, Councilmember Neil.
Yeah.
The the reason this is coming up now and has received this amount of thought is because we have heard from the majority of this council, including at the council retreat a couple of weeks ago, that a major priority, perhaps the major priority, is staffing, attraction and retention. And pay being a big part of that. It, it is, it would be unusual for us to bring something of this scale, especially over a multi-year time period to council without council, we we believe as staff giving us the the direction to do so. So we, we are responding to what we think we heard as a priority from you all. Not in, I would hate for us to come off as presumptuous as to this is just an unsolicited handout from us, quite respectfully.
Madam Chair.
I am not saying that this was an unsolicited presentation, and I'm glad you did present it to us. But maybe I didn't hear it as strong at our retreat as as you're portraying it. Because I I heard other things were of equal importance at the retreat also. So anyway, it's good information, I think there's some missing information, and I hope we get some of that before we, if we are truly fiscal conservatives. I I hope we wait to get some of that information before we do any voting, but that's just my, my personal opinion.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and interrupt, Russ, Robert wanted to say one thing, and then we're done, because I know other council members wanted to break before council begin.
Absolutely, and my question was, can we take up this when it becomes the item on the, can we have a discussion on this when it comes? So we can table the rest of this now?
Yes.
And I propose that.
Yep, great, okay, thank you, Steph. Work session's done, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody be back at seven.
Thank you, and do we use the same link, or do we just put our video on? Turn the video off, turn the mic on, and we'll just reconvene.
Same link.
We'll be back in the same link.
Thank you.